Hello, everyone. I'm sorry.
This is the latest one, and there may be a change to, you know, the electricity issue and...
We're ready? Okay.
I thought there was something else.
Welcome, everyone, to the Marshville Borough Council Agenda Meeting. It's March 13, 2018. If you'll please all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay. This is basically our work session meeting where we go over some of the things for the meeting on Monday, add some, take some off, whatever the case may be. So, welcome, everyone.
Madam President, you have two presentations tonight. One is legal.
Okay.
I'll turn it over to the solicitor or assistant solicitor for that.
Okay.
And the second of which is Keystone Municipal Services.
Okay. Would you like to do this first and then public comment?
Yeah, that way they can leave if they wish to. Yeah, we'll do roll call first.
Do the roll call first.
Here.
Here. Here. Here. Yeah, he called and actually sent a message. He was sick tonight. Yes.
Yes. Filling in is Edward Zanon.
And our Finance Director, I believe?
Yes, we'll be introducing him shortly.
Okay. All right. Okay, would you let, which one you want to start with first? Doesn't matter?
The legal presentation, if you don't mind.
Okay, would you like to proceed?
Sure, thank you, Madam President. We have Rosemary Pinto from Feldman &amp; Pinto. She'd like to do a short presentation about hiring her firm and another firm. They're doing basically litigation against Big Pharmacy or Big Pharma regarding the opioid crisis and that they, in fact, created. I'll leave her to explain that, and I'm sure Council will have some questions to answer.
Thank you, Ed. And thank you, Madam President and Council, for giving me the opportunity to speak with you. I'm sure you've been reading in the newspapers about the opioid crisis and the litigation that's been occurring. Essentially, in a nutshell, what has developed over decades is an opioid crisis in this country where prescription opioids have been over-prescribed, over-marketed, and pushed on prescribers and their patients through a program that was dishonest. Prescribers were convinced that opioids needed to be prescribed in large numbers for things that really didn't require opioid treatment. That is not to say that some disorders do not require opioid treatment. There are some that do, but the over-prescription has resulted in a crisis in this country which is monumental. And what the studies have shown is that 70% to 80% of currently addicted heroin users started out with a non-necessary over-prescription of opioids. And what has occurred is that litigation has begun to stop this from continuing into the future and to recover the money that certain entities who have been hit the hardest should get back from the manufacturers and distributors who profited in the multi-billion from pushing these drugs. And essentially, the people that have been hurt the hardest, other than the individuals, obviously, are hospitals and governments because of the cost of paying for the opioid crisis. So, what our firm is doing is representing both hospitals and governmental entities to bring lawsuits on their behalf to recover any costs that are related to the opioid crisis. And for government entities, as yourselves, what that would incur could be a wide variety, and we would have to work with borough representatives to determine what the damages have been in the past and what they will be in the future. But it can be anything related to emergency responses, awareness programs, disposal programs, treatment that may have been paid for. We would have to meet with representatives of the borough to determine what the damages were that were related to the opioid crisis for the past couple decades and what they will be going forward and create a damage profile to recover that money. In addition, of course, we're litigating against the manufacturers and the distributors to prove that they did do this. They violated both federal and state laws in their marketing practices, in their tracking practices, and they are responsible. Currently, there is a federal multi-district litigation where approximately 500 cases are already consolidated. There are also various state court actions going on across the country. This is not a class action. Class actions, I'm sure you've heard that term and you're somewhat familiar with them, class actions are where a lawyer or various law firms represent a group and there is just a mass settlement and it's divided up among the parties. And oftentimes, what you see is the attorneys make a lot of money and the parties don't make a lot of money. This is different. These are individual lawsuits being brought on behalf of the entities such as the governments or the hospitals that have been hurt, and your individual damages are put forth in your own case. They are consolidated in a mass tort fashion, either in federal court or the state court litigation, which will be coordinated with the federal court. But each individual entity gets to present its own damages and try to get the recovery for the damages that it lost. The way our firms operate, and I should probably introduce our firms. My firm is a Philadelphia-based law firm. We've been practicing, my partner and I, for about 30 years. We've been focusing on pharmaceutical litigation for about the past 10 years. We have litigated against these same defendants in other litigations, not related to opioids, but other drugs. We have partnered with a firm in California by the name of Skekos and Crawford, and they are, they have been appointed by the federal MDL judge as the liaison counsel, which means that they will be coordinating that litigation for all of the parties and be intimately involved in the litigation process as well as the settlement process, which eventually we all believe will occur. The judge running the federal multi-district litigation believes that that will happen sooner rather than later, but it probably will entail a couple years of litigation before it actually resolves. And at that point, everybody who has filed a lawsuit will be at the table and will be able to submit their damages and try to collect them from these entities. So, we are asking you to consider doing that, meeting with us, seeing what your damages were, and seeing if a lawsuit to recover them is in your best interest. I have a write-up here about both of our law firms as well as the opioid litigation and what it entails. It's just a summary. If anybody is interested, I have several copies for the council and for anyone else who's interested. I could hand those up if you'd like.
Sure, thank you very much.
One last thing I would like to say is the way we operate is that we work on a contingent fee basis, which means that we will not charge you anything to do the work. We will fund all the costs. You will only pay a percentage. I believe that our proposed contract's already been circulated, but it's a 20% contingent fee, and it's only if we win. So, we believe so strongly in this litigation that we are willing to front the costs, do all the work, and the borough would pay nothing unless there is a recovery at the end of the day. Thank you. Does anybody have any questions?
If I could just jump in a quick second on the 20% fee, that's the lowest, I think, that's out there. I know some of the other municipalities are paying 25%. I think the City of Philadelphia is paying even higher than that. So, we were able to discuss this with Ms. Pinto before, and 20% is a really good fee.
We honestly believe that that is a fair fee because there, you know, in light of the number of people that we're representing, and there are going to be huge damages. And honestly, I think that those other fees may get reduced down the road to be more in line with what we're requesting.
How far, I'm sorry, how far back will those fees go? How far back will they be going? How many years? Do you know?
As far as collecting the damages, we will try to go back as far as we can, and that will be a judicial determination that will be hard fought because the defendants will claim there's a time limit. But from our perspective, our argument will be the acts of these defendants did not become well-known till recently, and this was essentially a cover-up for a very long time, decades. So, we're going to try to go back as far as we can, as well as to develop a profile for the future, because your damages aren't going to stop just because we filed the lawsuit and recover, because there's still the future. And one other important point of what we want to do in this litigation is not just to get money, we want to stop it. We want to put things in place that make these manufacturers and distributors obey the federal laws. There have been several lawsuits where they've had to pay a lot of money, but it hasn't stopped them. We want this litigation to put in place a stop. We want them to be responsible, follow the federal laws, stop the fake marketing, and only prescribe these drugs to seriously ill people that have serious pain syndromes when needed. And that's the goal of the litigation.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Our next presentation then would be from Rich from Keystone.
If it's okay with Council, I'll speak from over here.
Sure.
Do you remember at the last meeting, you asked us to perform a pre-scheduled evaluation for the borough, and what we have before you is a product of that. I'm going to go through some slides and show you our methodology.
Go through some slides and discuss our methodology for developing the fee schedule. The initial task was to generate what we defined as a program cost. That program cost is the costs internal to the community to actually run what's referred to in the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania as an opt-in program. And those costs include time for the zoning officer, the permit clerk, the receptionist, the borough manager, and the finance director. Now, portions of each of those people are involved with the permit process. Obviously, the permit clerk is billed at 100%, but the borough manager, finance director are at 10%, and then the zoning officer is at 30%. In addition, those program costs include ordinances, forms, and applications that need to be printed, general office supplies and infrastructure, copies of the codebooks and the NFPA codebooks, computer hardware and software for the receptionist and the permit clerk, communication costs, which would be your phone costs into the building, and a 10% contingency. Your cost, when you add all that up to run an opt-in program, is approximately $179,900 a year. We took that number, divided it by 2080, which are how many billable hours in a year. It comes up to approximately $87. So, when someone submits a building permit application, in addition to time spent for the third-party agency to do the plan review and inspections, also in back of them is $87 an hour. That's how we developed that program cost. We went through a number of criteria and established what we've referred to as baseline scenarios. Those baseline scenarios include a single-family detached dwelling, a 500-square-foot addition to a single-family detached dwelling, 10,000-square-foot commercial industrial flex space, a 2,500-square-foot tenant fit-out, and a 200-square-foot residential deck. Those were the baseline scenarios developed for the fee schedule. We then evaluated how much time it would take a third-party agency to actually do the plan review and inspections for each of those baseline scenarios. And as you see in the information, for a single-family detached dwelling, it would take approximately 18 hours of plan review and inspection time. A 500-square-foot addition, approximately 6.75 hours. A commercial industrial flex space, about 57 hours. A tenant fit-out, 5.75, and a 200-square-foot residential deck, approximately three hours to do both the plan review as well as the inspections. We then took those numbers, added them into your $87 an hour cost for the internal costs. So, every time somebody submits a single-family detached dwelling application internal to your community, it costs approximately $1,566 of borough time beyond the building inspector's time. And go through each of those baseline scenarios. For the addition, it's approximately $587. The commercial industrial flex space, approximately $5,000. The tenant fit-out, $500. And the 200-square-foot deck, approximately $261 of borough time beyond the building inspector and to do his plan review and inspections. Under your existing current fee structure, for a single-family detached dwelling, you are collecting approximately $115. That includes the $35 per-application fee that you collect. There is a $75 use and occupancy certificate fee that you should be collecting pursuant to Resolution 988, I think it is, that was just passed in January. And that also includes the $4.50 for the state training fee, but that $4.50 every quarter has to be forwarded to the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania. Your program costs, again, are approximately $1,500 for that single-family detached dwelling of internal cost. So, every time somebody were to apply for and construct a new dwelling in Morrisville Borough, it would cost the community $1,451 of lost revenue. The existing, or I'm sorry, the previous third-party agency was billing $2,300, but all you were getting was $115. For each of those baseline scenarios, under the current fee structure, for the single-family dwelling, you're losing approximately $1,400. For the addition, you would lose approximately $472. For the commercial flex space, approximately $4,000. For the tenant fit-out, $400. And for the residential deck, approximately $155 of lost revenue to the borough. Moving forward, and the fee schedule that we've proposed, the program cost of each of those scenarios and the current third-party agency with the current billing rates, you would need to collect, under the single-family detached dwelling, $2,800. For the addition, $1,126. For the flex space, approximately $9,000. For the tenant fit-out, approximately $974. And for the 200-square-foot residential deck, you need to collect to cover both the program costs and the third-party agency costs, approximately $450. We developed the fee schedule based around these baseline scenarios, and the fee schedule you have in your packets would collect, for the single-family detached dwelling, $3,215. For the 500-square-foot addition, $980. For the commercial industrial flex space, $16,100. For the tenant fit-out, about $1,100. And for the deck, about $230. In addition, we went through and we did the same baseline scenarios and costed them out for a number of communities in the area. Those communities include Langhorne Borough, Pendell Borough, Yardley Borough, Bristol Borough, Lower Makefield Township, Bristol Township, Falls Township, and Tullytown Borough. Each one of those baseline scenarios was costed out for all of those communities to generate what we referred to as a regional average. The regional average for a single-family detached dwelling is approximately $3,300. Under that fee schedule you have before you, you would collect $3,215. For the 500-square-foot addition, the regional average is $803. Under the fee schedule you have in front of you, you would collect $980. For the 10,000-square-foot commercial industrial flex space, the regional average is $16,907. You would collect $16,100. For the tenant fit-out, the regional average is 9,000, I'm sorry, $979. You would collect approximately $1,100. And for the residential deck, the regional average is $308, and you would collect $230. Now, that residential deck number is low because it is extremely difficult to cover all the program costs for smaller projects. But that $230 pays for the third-party agency to do the plan review and inspections and does have money left over to support the program costs for the borough for the deck application. That was the methodology for developing the fee schedule you have in front of you. The one change from the information that you received on Friday to today was I went through Ordinance 988, I believe it is, that was adopted in January, and I've incorporated all of those fees that were associated with that resolution into this resolution, inclusive of the sanitation costs as well as the police costs, as well as everything else that was identified in Resolution 988, I believe it was.
Okay.
Do you have any questions?
Well, that about says it.
Rich, just so you all know, when Rich was in evaluating our internal program costs, it felt like an IRS audit. But a little context, the borough is going to be charging slightly more for its permit fees.
That's correct.
But netting more than it was under the prior
Absolutely.
third-party provider.
Absolutely. And with those, with those costs, you are covering most of your program costs in the borough. Previously, the, under the current fee structure that was provided by the previous third-party agency, there really wasn't thought given to covering the internal costs nor developing those internal costs for the borough. This exercise actually identifies that and hopefully addresses that.
Yeah, unless anybody in the room knows different, we're not sure this analysis had ever been conducted before, so it's helpful.
So, basically, your internal cost for your administration to process all that, everything else you needed was not being compensated for because it was, no analysis was ever done for that?
Absolutely not. And again, back to, one of those previous slides shows how much you were losing with each one of those baseline scenarios.
I want to thank you for doing it, and I want to thank Scott for suggesting it. I think we, it was $1,500? A good investment. Thank you very much.
Yes.
He already told me he'd never agree to it again for that price.
Not, not in 30 days, anyway. Costed out all those communities is a time-consuming effort.
I'll bet, I'll bet. But something we definitely needed to, to help us understand exactly where we stood with all this. So, thank you very much.
I just have one quick question. Looking at the fees versus what the estimated construction cost is, my quick math says it's about 1.6% of that. Is that about ballpark, under 2% for permit fees of surrounding areas?
I didn't do it on a percentage basis, so I, I don't know. Unfortunately, I didn't do a construction cost methodology. I did an hourly cost methodology. But 2%, if that's what the number comes out to, that, that's what it comes out to.
You definitely have to make sure that it's a service that you're doing for the residents as well as anyone that's coming in to do work in your town, so you have to cover your cost, no matter what. And that, and because it was not ever done, we never knew where we stood with that. So, like you said, we were losing money every year because we were not doing the analysis properly to know where we stood on what we needed to collect. So, thank you. Okay. Ready to move on? There's no more, there's no more presentations, correct?
No more presentations. If you want to
Okay.
run down the agenda, we can. Oh, I'm sorry, there is one more presentation. I keep forgetting. I'd like to take this opportunity to introduce the borough's new Finance Director, Micah Heights. He's from New Jersey, but we're trying to not hold that against him. He's only been on the job for about two weeks now, but he dove right in. And in fact, we've had the auditors here all week this week working on the annual audit. So, he's been busy with that. We're happy to have him.
Yes, thank you. Welcome aboard. Look forward to working with you. Okay. We're just going to go over some of the things that are going to be for the agenda on Monday night so that we can weigh in, what we need, what we don't. We'll just roll right down. We get into our announcements. One of our announcements for Monday night will be 4A, which is swearing in a part-time officer, Edward Radlo. I don't think there's any comment on that. We've, we talked about that before. Public comment. Oh, I didn't do public comment tonight. Oh, I'm so sorry. Before I even get that far. Oh, nobody had public comment? Nobody, I'm sorry, I missed that. But in case anybody wanted to, this would be your time. No, we're good? Okay. After that would be approval of the minutes. We have January 2, 2018, January 16, 2018, February 13, 2018. Everyone received all this in their, in their packets? If you've had any issues with it or need anything done, please contact the office. If you haven't, to make any of those corrections. Anybody have anything to say about them tonight? No? No, we're good? Okay, next would be, finance would be our treasurer's report. After that would be a motion to approve the bill list and the, pay the bills. After that would be our, our reports, would be our manager's report.
Yeah, I actually have a few things for you tonight, if you're willing to indulge me.
Sure.
First, so everybody knows, today was demo day at MR Rider Elementary School, despite the weather. Thank you to all who came out, we appreciate it. Full demolition is now underway. As you saw in your folders this evening, the demolition contractor has requested a five-day extension to his contract timeline due to weather. And I'm inclined to accommodate him on that if counsel has no objection. And also to let council members know, we have obtained some extra bricks from the school. So anybody who wasn't able to attend today, if you would like a brick, feel free to see me after the meeting and we will hook you up with your own brick.
This, you just need a consent to the council? You need a vote actually to give the extension on this?
We'll vote on it on Monday, if you're willing to grant it. We'll put it on the agenda.
Okay, that's fine.
Okay.
Add that on.
And the next item is, we've distributed a number of resumes to you for the council vacancy.
Yes.
Is it council's intention to appoint a replacement next week? Because we did include that on the agenda, assuming so.
Yes, yes, it will be.
There's a personnel matter I'd like to discuss with council, and that is, there was an item in your packets about this last week. That is the crew leader position in the Public Works Department. If you'll refer to your packet, as I understand it, this was previously negotiated and agreed to, and it was budgeted. However, for whatever reason, unbeknownst to me, it was never implemented. So we would like to recommend an hourly rate adjustment for the crew leader position to bring it in line with what was negotiated and agreed upon.
First, I'd like to talk about that. I have the original schedule that had what was agreed upon in the collective bargaining. And at that particular time in 2015, there wasn't a crew leader position put in there. It was done, from what I'm getting from the memo that we got, it was done through something that a previous manager had done, had sent a letter into the union to ask to have that added, which was an amendment actually to the, to the agreement. I will say, though, to this point, that council did not get this at that time. I was on council's time to, actually have it formally voted by, by the council. With that said, when it comes down to the amount of money, if you look at what is in the memo as to the paying amount, and you look at the schedule that was given to us, it already is at 2018, the first amount. It's at 2564.
Right.
So the $2 increase is above what was already then negotiated in 2015, because then you're amending the contract, correct?
That's, yes, there is a contract amendment in here from the union
That said?
For the $2 increase to 2764 an hour.
Where, where was that? Where's that memo at?
This here. It was, it should have been in your packet, attached to the letter. Yeah, that's it.
The memorandum?
Yep. Memorandum of understanding. The current one is in there, as well as the proposed. And the proposed includes the change that we're discussing.
And you have a signed one?
I have a signed one of the current one, which includes the position in it at its rate. And then I have the unsigned one that we're proposing.
So you're saying in 2015, the former manager amended this without the council and then also gave that increase back then?
I can't speak to the history or what was done or by whom, but according to the documentation available, the position exists, it's in the agreement, at the rate noted. And we're looking to amend the current agreement and make that adjustment.
So that is the signed one, correct? Maybe I'm confused. This is the signed one, right?
Yep.
Isn't that it? Isn't that the amount you're talking about?
Yeah, right. That's the current amount. Right there.
Okay, and then where's it say that?
So just for clarification, what you're asking us to do is, is approve a $2 an hour increase?
Correct. For this position.
And this says to give $2 increase?
Well, that's the current one. You need to find the proposed one, which was behind it.
I have a proposed one.
Everything stays the same, it just reflects the previously agreed-upon adjustment.
This person is someone that was just moved up into this position?
As far as I know, this position has existed for a while, in some way, shape, or form. And we have someone who's been serving in that capacity.
I see.
Right. So that's the proposed rate.
And this is the one that we have? You have a signed one of this?
I don't have a signed one of the proposed one because it hasn't been approved yet.
Oh, this one is the one you're getting most of the updated?
That's the one we're requesting for approval, yes.
Got it.
This is the number-two position in the Public Works Department. Crew leader, crew supervisor, however you want to couch it.
So we're actually doing an amendment to this?
Yes.
It wasn't in here originally. We're doing it for this position?
Correct.
Okay, that's where the confusion was. I'm thinking, this was already agreed to back then, so this is the amount?
Well, I'm told it, it was previously negotiated and agreed to, was not implemented, and that's what we're looking to do now.
But there's no proof it was implemented? That's the thing. There's no, there's nothing that was, that was implemented?
Well, it wasn't implemented. That's what we're looking to do now, is implement it.
I think she means the contract, the negotiation itself, the agreement to
Said that that's the amount.
To add the position. I think that's what she's talking about.
Well, not even that, but the amount that it was being added extra money to, there's, where's that at?
That's the, that's the
Is it me?
That's the proposal.
In the proposed endem.
Right, that you want to do now.
Yes.
But there's nothing that says back then, when this was changed in 2015, that that was agreed to. No documentation that says
I can't speak to the history of any of it. You guys would probably know better than me.
This is all I have, and I, I collect everything. I guess it's going to be up to the council. I personally don't have anything that states that this increase was done. I do know that the crew leader position was put in after the vote in 2014 for the contract. It was done six months ahead of time. It was done, I believe, in May of 2014. And at that point, this position was not put in there. It was, I think it was actually called, if I look back on the statements, just to make sure everybody understands this. It was called a Public Works Foreman, and then got changed over in 2015 to the Public Works Crew Leader. And like I said, and that was
Was, Debbie, was the Foreman Union or non-union?
It was, it was non-union before that. Because it was supervisory, that I remember. And I said, then the former manager put it into the union. But that was the thing, it wasn't asked to be put into that contract at the time it was, it was being voted by the council. So that's my, my thing with it. And I don't have any documentation that says that, okay, this was the original, and they put it in, and the $2 was given as being said it was. So it's going to be up to the council to decide if they're going to basically do an amendment to that tonight, because you amended a contract that was negotiated, but you have no proof that that was actually put in. You can, you can latterly see the position if you're going to put it in. They obviously put it in, even though the council didn't do the formal signatures that the manager should have got back then. But at this point, when I asked the manager today if they need that position, he said they do. So it's going to be up to the council whether you're going to amend it to give the extra $2, that you have no proof that that was actually part of it back then, because this is the approved amount that you got.
Put it on the agenda.
Okay. All right.
Is that the same pay rate that the workers are getting, or?
No, it's
No, it would be higher.
It's an escalated rate.
Already higher?
Yes.
And this is going to add $2 more?
Correct.
Now?
Right. So for clarification, for now, this is the whole schedule for every year. The contract gets renegotiated for 2019. And for 2018, that crew leader would be then at the 2564, which is what you got in that memo. So according
That's, that's the current rate.
Right, the current rate. So that you understand, we, $2 above that current rate that was negotiated on back then, because I have nothing else that says
I think what you're saying is, you don't believe that it was actually negotiated, it was just put in.
I can't say it wasn't, but it was never given to council
Gotcha.
To, for an actual
It was never approved, I should
Right, right. If it was something internally done, we have, I have no documentation. They obviously don't have documentation for that.
I wasn't here and can't speak to it, but there may have been some steps missed.
Right.
Fair enough.
Okay, so I guess you would put it on the agenda for a vote for that, and if the council wants to give that, I just have to remember that when you start amending contracts that are already negotiated in, sets a precedence that you're doing that.
Okay, well, we'll include that on the agenda for Monday.
I have a question on that. Maybe our solicitor can chime in. If we decide to increase the pay for one person in the union contract, does that open us up to anything else for the rest of them, for grievances or anything?
It's, it's a little hard to give you an exact answer. I don't have the agreement in front of me. I'd have to see how it was written. It's possible, but it's also not possible. I'd have to really take a look at the language.
Anyone else?
I think since the union is requesting it and advocating for it, I don't think it would become a grievable matter.
He, he was saying that, but far as anyone else, anyone else saying what you, you know?
True.
And I guess further clarification too, maybe, Scott, you're going to know this, is this managerial?
No.
No?
No.
Okay. All right. Well, I guess we'll put it on, and the council have to make a decision whether they want to approve the $2 increase. And then the position obviously was put in there. If they want to change that, it'll have to do during the negotiation time. Shame it wasn't done right in the first place. Anyone else with that? Okay.
All right, the next item I have for you then is Morrisville Little League. Jim Schaefer is here with us, ladies and gentlemen. If I could turn your attention to our documents that have been going back and forth on Morrisville Little League. The last proposal that was put forward included two items that I think we would like to speak about tonight, and that is the $3,000 annual reimbursement to the borough for electricity. Jim will speak to this in more detail, but apparently the Little League is already paying about $12,000 or $13,000 a year towards electricity costs at the park. So we were looking to eliminate the $3,000 reimbursement from our wish list here. And the other is the effort to repurpose current fields that have permanent fixtures, backstops or fencing, for baseball into multipurpose fields. Of course, it's a little late perhaps for the season, and there's a time and cost involved in doing so. So we wanted to find out from council if you would agree to allow that to be phased in over the course of year two of this multi-year agreement. Other than that, the document you have in front of you with the bullet points pretty much remains where we are at this point. So
Scott, are you talking about the end of this season, beginning of, before next season starts? Or are we now already into the second season with this fixture still in?
Well, since he's already at the hot seat, Jim, take it away.
So, thank you. I appreciate the opportunity. First, if I may, the, the matter of the PICO bills that Scott alluded to, we currently incur three separate bills monthly, which actually come from the borough. They are addressed to the borough and then sent to the league, and we pay them on a monthly basis for three different lighted fields. And last year, our complete total was about $10,600 was the, the added up to it. And I brought the actual bills of, if you've not seen them or are familiar with them, they actually come from the borough and that we, we pay them. If there was anything additional that we were responsible for, we certainly talk about that, but in the conversations that I've had with Scott, he did not feel that it was globally understood amongst council, the bills that we incurred from PICO. So I wanted to make sure that that was clearly understood and that we do currently pay quite a large number of bills because of the energy that we consume there. Secondly, the, the increase that was proposed, or counter-proposed, if I will, if you may, the original fee that we had hoped for was $5,000 a year, and the counter-proposal was slated at $7,000 per year. In removing any type of permanent fixture on a T-ball field, for me to purchase a temporary fixture to use for a, you know, two, two-and-a-half-month stretch of time, is, is going to cause me to incur some expense. So the expense of the temporary fixture to replace the permanent one is what I'm asking for you to consider reducing that 7,000 to keep it at 5,000. That's what, that's what I'm asking. Because of the need to, to purchase and replace those, that's, that's really where I'm, where I'm at. In looking at our budget, and looking at the monies that we've already paid in arrears for this year and moving forward, that's going to give us the best ability to work together on that. So the, again, the temporary backstop for me will probably cost around $4,000. So I can't put that kind of money out and pay the additional cost to you at the same time. That's what I'm, that's what I'm asking. So
So I think, to sum up where we are, is the current pageable points in front of you. If we drop the 3,000 annual reimbursement for electricity in light of what they're already reimbursing us, and if we're willing to allow the phase-in of field conversion from permanent to mobile because of time and cost, and perhaps adjust the annual lump-sum permit fee in light of that, is where we stand at the present time.
I mean, you could put that up for vote, but I don't think that you guys have the votes to make that happen. I honestly don't think you're going to get, be able to get that passed.
Can I ask why?
Could I say?
Because we, we provided an alternative that was so, already so far reduced from what the rules were, that you're, you just don't have the support for it. You just don't. Because at this point, I think we've given a very good alternative. I think we had a consensus that it was a really good alternative for you. We don't want you going anywhere, but you have to follow the rules, right? And they, they've, they've been implemented for, for a long enough time and not followed that we're kind of in a position where in a position where we're asking you to follow the rules, we're providing you rules that we feel are completely within reason, and we're right back kind of to square one. Because it's still, hey, this is what we offered you, take it. You're asking please, you're asking nicely by the way, and I appreciate that. But the key is, we've already set this out, we've already updated it several times for you, and we're asking you to follow the rules, because these are the ones that are being out there for you.
You refer to them as rules?
Yes.
Okay. I referred to it as an agreement, I was hoping it was something that we would agree to.
So when the borough sets fees for anything, right, you're creating a value for it. So if there's a per day cost for you to use those fields, and we break that down, I, in good conscience, can't charge anybody else who's looking to use the park one penny more than what Morrisville Little League is going to pay. So you're asking us to set the bar extremely low for any use of that park?
So-
So it is a rule?
I understand, I understand what you're trying to say, and I guess from where I sit, the, we provide a little bit more than I guess a standard tenant would, as far as maintaining the fields. There's a lot of repairs I could show you, a lot of the things that I still need to do down there, as far as fence repairs, as far as planting grass, as far as dirt, seed, stone, that's a cost. And if I was just a tenant and saying, okay, I'll pay you your fee, well then you maintain the field.
The fee would be much higher then, but yes, that, we actually, you and I spoke about that, remember, when we sat down and had a conversation? It was about a year and a half, almost two years ago now, and I said, maybe that's an option. I don't know that you want that option, but sure, that could be an option if that's what you're looking to do.
Can I just get some clarification? I apologize, I'm not sure what Mr. Yeager's referring to. You're referring to the offer or the counter offer?
The counter.
The counter.
Because all he's asking for is the removal of the $3,000.
There was three things he asked for just now.
We're talking about the removal of $3,000, phasing in the conversion of fields from exclusive baseball to multipurpose, and in light of that granting relief on the lump sum annual permit fee from 7,000 to 5,000, which they would put that savings towards the cost of converting those fields.
Madam Chairman.
Is that accurately?
I think so, I think that's what I'm asking.
Madam Chairman, may I speak?
Sure, yes.
Okay. The $10,600 that you pay, what exactly is that for?
That's for the lights on the largest field, for the softball field and for the major field, the three lighted fields.
And who uses the lights?
Pardon me?
Who uses the lights?
We do.
So why should the residents be paying for them?
I'm not asking the residents to pay for them.
No, but do you know what the other fees are for, the $3,000 that they're asking for?
No.
Your clubhouse, the borough pays that. Originally, there was an agreement where the borough would pay up to $1,500 a year.
Okay.
It well exceeds that now. The borough is still paying that. I don't think the residents should be paying to operate the clubhouse.
Fair enough, but I would like to see what that, what it-
I mean, residents don't use the clubhouse.
I understand that, but what I'm saying is, the $3,000 that Mr. Mitchell had said they wanted us to pay for, I didn't know what that bill was for, because we already pay, like I said, we already pay three different bills.
This is in addition to the lights.
Okay. But I don't need to know if my clubhouse lights were tied in with my major field or my, or my-
No, it's separate.
No, they're separate.
It's a separate bill that we get every month.
Okay.
And also, as far as the multipurpose fields, they were originally multipurpose fields. I know you're new and you don't know what the original agreement was, I imagine, but I was on council and I was also on the Recreation Advisory Board. They were to be multipurpose fields for anyone that wants to use them, with nothing permanent put in the fields. So I don't think that the borough should have to reduce the fee, yearly fee, to get you to remove the backstops that shouldn't be there in the first place. That's my opinion. So that's all I have to say on it right now.
Okay. If I could ask, the, once you're talking about taking down for the temporary for T-ball, that's in front of the stage area, is that correct?
Yes.
So those two fields, you want to take down those permanent ones, and that's what you want the savings for?
Yeah, except I want to be able to use it temporary, as was requested.
In that area. The multipurpose area, that, in that agreement that Ms. Reisbach is talking about back then, the T-ball was supposed to be moved to that area, which never happened, and you now have transition teams there. So you have fields that are there. That area also is going to have those backstops and stuff come down, because that is a multipurpose area. With the improvements down the road, we said, yeah, you can use, take those backstops down and you can use that area. When it comes to the plans, it's not going to stop the plans for what's going to be developed in Williamson Park. So just to let you know that at some point, because our engineers are working on some of those plans, wherever that ends up being, it could end up being part of that. So I wouldn't look that to be down the road years from now, a permanent area for that. That's why we're saying we always wanted it as multipurpose. I think the council's been really fair, as far as you're still using those same areas, but no one else can use them with those backstops and stuff up, so that's, I think that was actually good of us to say, we'll let you still use it, but that other equipment has to come down. The fee, same thing, we started way up here and managed to get us all the way down here four years later. And I understand you have bills, and so do we. The 7,000 and your lower for the two for your cost to take down those areas that you put those things up for, when we're paying the cost for some of that electric, we're basically, it's for free, you're there. So in the end, at the end of the day, that's exactly what happened, you wanted it free and it's free. I think we're being more than generous then when it comes to the fields, we can't be giving it away for nothing and still paying a bill for, still costs us, and also lose the land use. So council can make a decision on this, we've gone back and forth and back and forth, there's been problems on both sides, as far as who was walking away from the table, this happened last year and walked away, and no discussion was coming until fall time, and here we are again, right before the season, and we're back and forth, back and forth. The last time, this last agreement came before it was changed again, from what I understand from the manager, it changed three times the night we were having our meeting. That's really unfair to the council to hand it to them that night and expect us to then, okay, make a decision about that. So that's why I personally that night said, it has to go to the council to at least take a look at this. So if that's what you're asking on here, it can go before the council for what you want and see where they go with it, but I believe that this was the last, that when I last got this, I thought this, okay, this is it. Finally made it, make a decision, and now we're finding, well, wait a minute, we want to pencil that in a little bit different. And I think you've got the council up to here now, up to here, you're pushing the envelope, seriously.
As I said to you in October, I want very much to work with council, I very much want to have open dialogue. I feel as though I've been coming to you in good faith and been pretty much open to everything that you've suggested, and I'm asking for some lenience.
Can you admit that we've lowered the bar for ourselves to help you out? I mean, from where?
I understand, but I've also, I've also counter-proposed that the other municipalities don't charge their sports leagues anything, and there's other situations that aren't common, that don't mirror what is being proposed here. So that's been the point of contention for years, and I understand, and I'm trying to work with something that I hope is fair and sustainable for a long, long time. So I'm just trying, I'm trying to do the best I can.
Yeah, we could, I won't say argue, we could agree to disagree about the other towns, and they're great, and they've got sports areas and they have separate public parks. This is our public park that's turned into a sports venue, and as we're trying to give some of it, and we had this conversation, you and I personally, four years ago, when I came and sat with your board and tried talking back then, and said, what about the town? You know, we can all work together, but it doesn't seem to be that way, it's kind of like, well, as long as we have what we want, so we're trying.
And I'm trying as well.
Yeah, so some of this area, I mean, the council could have gone, that's it, we're trying not to do that, we don't want to do that, we want to work with the league, but there's got to be, there's got to be, I think it's, we've been more than more of this. So as far as the land use, we're letting you play there, that stuff has to come down, it has to be able to be used for other things. If council wants to lower that amount of money, it's going to be up to everybody to vote to do that. We've lowered it again and again and again, and basically we're putting a lot of money out of our pocket, and you're going to be there for free utilizing a good percent of that park.
I wouldn't say I'm doing it for free, but-
Well, it would be if it's lowered to five and then we still pay the electric bill. It's a wash, is basically what that is.
If there's electric, if there's electric that, to council person's point, if it's electric that I'm responsible for, then I agree with you, I should pay for it. But at the time, it wasn't, it wasn't explained to me exactly what that bill was for. So I said, I'm already paying a $10,000 bill, what's the additional $3,000 for?
And that's fair, because these agreements were done years ago, I have letters from way back, nine years ago, when it was talked about the electric, when the bill was running real high, and council had turned it over to baseball at the time and said, oh, can't, can't pay this, the bill was running thousands of dollars, and I said, oh, can't pay this. And then it went back and forth back then with one of the coaches, and then it was negotiated to say, okay, we'll pay part of that for that, we'll pay this because you're going to pay for the lights, it was done by a grant, and that's what you guys are paying, they're separately metered for that, and we've been paying this. But at the time, it was more than 50% of our kids, and so we could justify that the rest was sweat equity. It is not anymore, and we've gone back and forth about that.
I know, and the 50% thing is decades old.
Yeah, and, well, Lower Mayfield was 80%, and I believe it still is, so.
Oh, it is, it is, but I'm saying, when our charter was created, everything north of Ferry Road was a farm.
Correct, but you have to admit that that's, that's fair, that's where that's coming from, because it's no longer that the taxpayers would benefit the most from it, it's, that's just the way it is. But that's for another day, we could, like I said, disagree about this for how long.
I know, I know.
We need to come to an agreement with this, because you were like right there when it comes to starting this, this season.
I know that, I know, that's why it looks so common.
So.
And 2020 is right around the corner, there will be plenty of time between now and then to revisit some of these terms.
One of the, one of the small things I'm going to say about this agreement myself, when I looked it over, when it says to, no structures or fixtures of a permanent nature will be installed on the borough property without pre-approval, I wanted to also state by borough manager and council, because, and there was issues where it was just given permission from-
I believe it was our original proposal to say that, you know, we should meet at least yearly, if not bi-annually.
Correct.
Just to stay on the same page.
That's in here still.
And it's in, that's on, I mean, that was our original proposal, I recognize that from day one, that the biggest problem of all was there was no communication. And, you know, I feel as though we're off to a much better start here, and I want that to continue, but I'm trying to set myself up for success financially as well. Numbers are down, I know that, and I've shared that as well, so I just, I don't want to put myself in a position where I'm not able to provide any fees.
That's a two-way street.
I know, I know that.
We have to be able to provide something for the taxpayers in that major park that we have there.
Understood.
Let me ask you something hypothetical.
Sure.
At this point, because we don't have all of our plans down for there.
And there's no public comment tonight, by the way.
Yeah, so I'm just going to ask you, since we're going back and forth. When it comes to developing that park, we're going to do our best to maneuver around some of the things that we want to put in there for the taxpayers also, so that this can be some kind of a partnership. Are you going to be prepared if we have to come through some of those areas and reconfigure some of those things?
I shudder to think about it, I do. I mean, it's, we struggle now for practice fields, I mean, we try to utilize every space we can in any open space in the area, we try to use the high school where we can, we try to use everything we can, so spaces is at a premium and it's precious, especially for the practice. Games, you can usually schedule them and stack them up and make them happen, but when kids want to practice and learn, which is one of the greatest things about our league, is that we develop players and they enjoy it, and we give ample time for practice. That's, that's where we're, it's tough. So yeah, it does give me pause, and it does scare me, you know, when I, I want the park to look great, trust me. More people want to come and play in our league when the park looks great. And I know that's something important to both of us, but yeah, if you're going to tear up a couple of fields for a walking trail, yeah, it scares the heck out of me, it really does. And I think, you know, I guess in fairness, when the question I would ask you and I would ask council is, when you, I feel you're representing the people of the borough, have, is there any type of survey to say, how many people in the borough want the league and the park to remain as it is? Not, that's not beautified, but that the fields are the way they are, that there's enough fields for kids to participate. How many people in the borough would say, you know what, whatever fields are there now, we're fine with, you know, and you can beautify the park around the fields that exist now, so that we can get, both get what we want. I'm willing to take down backstops for T-ballers, because I can, I think it's something that's doable, without jeopardizing the quality of the product that we have to offer to people who come and join the league. That I think is fair and equitable, but when, if you were to take away one of our major fields, that's going to be tough, it's going to be a tough thing.
T-ball is a major field?
No, 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 if you were to renovate one of our major, it would affect one of the larger fields on our, in our complex, that would be extremely detrimental.
Well, we don't anticipate coming down through Babe Ruth League, is that, that's what you're asking?
That's good, it's a start.
But that was the idea of, back then, years ago, making sure that a certain amount of that multipurpose area stayed multipurpose for that reason.
But again, do you feel as though that you represent the majority of residents in the borough?
I represent them all.
With your plan? No, but I'm saying, if you had a survey, but we went door to door and asked everybody, hey, would you like this or this, what would they choose? I'd love to know.
We actually did the survey.
Okay.
We did the survey.
We did a survey?
Yeah.
And?
The county survey.
The county survey.
Oh, the county, county definitely surveyed, and the survey, yeah, I forgot all about that. Yeah, we actually had an open house, and I don't know if you attended, anybody from baseball attended that, it was actually pretty interesting. We allowed all the residents and business owners to come here with the pictures of what the park could look like as part of the revitalization plans for the town, and they loved it, they loved the idea of having recreation connected into their downtown. South End able to use for the first time now, because this doesn't have water down there, paid that grant that we had gotten to get that finally fixed and to do something down there, so it looks nice when you're entering into town, we finally do that part. When the county came and did that analysis, and the survey was taken from everyone, not us, whoever filled out those surveys, and we even did those surveys, left them at the Borough Hall, and sent them out even online to anybody else that wanted to sign up and send it to the county on what they wanted, what was their top priority they wanted in the renovations. Recreation in the park connected to the downtown was one of them.
Okay.
We didn't do that, they did that. And they collected all that data, and four months later brought that back, and then they took that and then redid the analysis and came back with that last presentation that they did. So yeah, Ms. Larson's right, we did do that part. For that reason also, because the county came in and took several months of doing analysis, walking down on the dike, gone through the canal area, our downtown, where we would do these revitalizations, and one of the things that today compared to years ago was people do more recreational, so you see a lot more of the trails, and we are part of that trail system that's being developed through all the other towns, and they start to connect. So it's, it's a big deal, and the county noticed it too, and when we asked people, and I even mentioned it just in passing, would you like to be able to, you know, have a trail to walk around? And they said, yeah, I go to Falls, and I have a place to do that here. So when you ask them about connecting that into the park, they think it's a great idea. It has anything to do with saying that they want you to leave, they're just saying, how about us? Is there, we're not saying we want to take y'all out and put up a, you know, a water slide and all that kind of stuff, that's not what we're talking about.
Right.
But we've got, and we talked about it before, this much to use, and you guys got this much to use. I think we've been more than fair, more than fair. So all I'm saying personally for myself is, as we've been going back and forth- is as we've been going back and forth with this for four years, and my, my personal stance has not changed on it. I love you guys. I think you do a great job with the kids. My own grandkids play sports. They play baseball. But the park is the only major park that we have, and we are attempting to do renovations for the taxpayers also. So we got to find that partnership here because right now you're utilizing a good part of that. And that's just where this contention is, is coming from. And it's not going to go away.
I, I know that. And we don't intend to fold up shop and go away either. We, we want to be part of the community, and we want to continue to provide what we've always provided. And we want to take care of the park like we always have. And we take a lot of pride in those fields. And we work hard on them. And, you know, there's a lot of tradition people before me. And I understand, you know, my responsibility is to them as well. I represent, you know, the members of our league. And I want to make sure that we're providing the type of product that, that they want. And I want to continue to try to attract more people to come into town and, and to play. So it's, it's something that I have to sit down with my board and make sure that we can continue to do that. And that's why I, that's why I ask for, for leniency there. Because, you know, we just cut a check for 10,000, and I'm going to have to cut another check. And I'm going to have to look for, you know, to spend money on those backstops. So I mean, there's, there's things I've got to do that, that's why I ask for leniency.
Is, Madam President, there sufficient support to advance this to Monday night's agenda?
Yes, if that's what they're, are you going to adjust this for what they're requesting?
Yeah, I'll revise this and recirculate this in your meeting packet. If you're in agreement.
Ah, yes. Everyone?
One question. You said you want to wait until next year for the backstops. Does that mean after the season next year or in the spring before the season starts?
So there's one backstop that's exact, that's directly in front of the stage?
One that's by the old snack shop or?
No, not in front of the snack, but the one in front of the stage.
Yeah.
I, I had said to Scott earlier, I said, that, that one I felt could go when you wanted it to.
Yeah, actually, Public Works is already going to remove that in June.
Okay. So.
So you just want the backstop that's in front of the smaller snack shop, snack stand, sorry, to wait until this season is over? Is that what you're asking?
Well, no.
And the two along Delmore.
No, the, the, the backstop in front of the stage, but let's, Scott said he's going to take it down in June. Okay. So that leaves me with one permanent one in front of the snack bar.
Right.
Okay, and then the one over on Delmore. So if I take the one down on Delmore, so the, the one that was near the, the playground, if you will, I'm trying to give it a, a good name.
There's, there's two down there. You have the.
We're going to number these fields eventually. This drives me crazy.
If I said T-ball three, you guys wouldn't know what I was talking about. That's why I'm saying. I know what T-ball one, two, and three are. But, so T-ball's one and two are the two in front of the stage area. So those two, you know, I feel like I could, I could live without one of them, but it's not going to come down until after June anyway, so I can use it for this, for this season because T-ball's finished by June anyway. I could get a, I could, those two could come down at the end of this year.
T-ball one and two.
Right. And then I could, over in the offseason, purchase a temporary one for next year to use in that area.
You're, you're requesting to extend T-ball three to finish out this season?
No, next year.
2019?
Yes. Yes.
So you're asking for it not to come down until the end of 2019, which would be June 2019?
Correct.
What about the ones on Delmore?
Because I'm going to have to buy, basically, I need at least two T-ball fields. So I would need two temporary backstops. So one I, one I could buy, depending on where my funds are, in the fall perhaps. And then I'd have to try and buy another one next year in 2019.
And then what about the one that was recently put up by, diagonally from T-ball three, that field?
I'd like to talk about that one a little bit more, if we could.
I wonder which one you're talking about?
That's the one that was put up, I think, two years ago?
Nah, it's, it's been up like eight years.
No, not, not.
One down by softball, the transition field?
By the transition field. Across from the tennis courts.
Right, that's the transition field.
That's not, yeah. They didn't do T-ball there. They never moved it. They made a transition there. They were supposed to move that there, T-ball. They didn't. So that's what you're talking about. That's what's confusing.
As long as, as long as I've been in the league, which is nine years now, that, that field's always been transitioned. That's always been the transition field that I've known of.
And that's, I said, that's when it was in follow-through because it was, it was nine years ago that was done.
Softball girls sometimes play there too, but there's the softball field that has lights.
That was the only softball field we had.
And then there's the small one there. That's the small softball field. Well, softball girls use it, and also transition boys.
That's the one right in front of the tennis courts and the, the.
Right.
And the basketball courts, right? That's softball? I mean, that's a transition.
Yeah.
Okay.
But girls and boys play there. They can play softball there, or they can play baseball there.
So you're, you're saying that you are not taking down the backstops along that whole transition area? You're now going to keep a developed field that was supposed to be there that's across from the girl softball? That one on the end?
I, I'm.
Is that what you mean?
No, I think we're talking about two different fields.
Wish we had a little bit of that here.
I think so. I'm talking about the one that everybody's, when it snows, goes down that hill. There's two fields right there. There's the transition field in front of.
Imagination Island.
Imagination Island. And then there's another one diagonal from that.
On the other end, the one that's developed with the fencing around it, towards the parking lot for the girls.
Yeah, but then I thought you were talking about the one that's by the girls softball.
There's another one?
Is there?
Hey, John, can you cut the air or I'm going to lose some council members to frostbite?
I didn't know there was another one.
Can, yeah, can I see?
There, there isn't.
That's why I'm confused. I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Okay. So just wait a minute.
Wow.
I think I'm getting my fields confused.
This one doesn't seem to turn off. How was it?
Yes, I'm saying.
I may be confused. That's why.
I thought it might be the one over by the door that's on.
I need my glasses for this.
This is the softball field. The softball field is fully fenced in on all sides in the outfield. This is the parking lot beside the softball field. These are the tennis and basketball courts here. This is what we refer to as the transitioning field.
That's where I was getting.
It consists of a backstop, a fence extended slightly down past third base, slightly down past third base, where balls reach into the parking lot or into the basketball courts. It consists of no outfield fence. This is entirely open space. This is what we call T-ball three. T-ball three consists of a backstop only. It butts to what used to be the playground here. And this is the, what we refer to as the makers' field. You can see the T-ball one and two fields on the north side of the park. T-ball one, where the stage field is closest to the pavilion. And T-ball two is the side of the snack stand, which is closest to our large, we call the big field. Both sides baseball field.
And I was confused. I'm sorry.
It's okay.
I added an extra field. Sorry.
Okay, so the.
For everybody off.
The transition field you're talking about and that whole grass area right there is that multipurpose area? There was not supposed to be any defined fields there at all? I'm sorry?
It's entirely open except for the very corners of the field that can see the backstop.
Those backstops were all supposed to come down. That's what we're talking about. That area, we want it cleared.
I understand, but.
Is that what you mean?
My point is, the backstops, the backstop on the transition field here, it literally runs three feet, maybe 10 feet at the most, off of the parking lot here. And three feet, maybe 10 feet at the most, off of the, the pathway that runs.
I get it. But you get, there was never ever supposed to be defined fields here, right?
I wasn't here.
Okay. That's, that's, that's what I'm saying.
Yeah, I apologize. I haven't seen any documentation for that.
You haven't. You haven't.
Yeah, we've, yeah, we've given documentation on it.
We'll give you a copy of it because they were approved as two multipurpose open fields. Nothing was to be put in either one of those fields.
This was before our time.
Yes, she has them.
Because that's, that's the, that's the part that everybody's talking about.
That we're talking about, along Delmore Avenue.
So let me ask you this.
It's open space.
So, so now that you know in the back north corner, you have T-ball one, T-ball two, and then T-ball three is the field that is basically next to the playground. So everybody understands where they are.
Right.
Okay. So if those three backstops were removed, if they were removed, would council agree to let us keep the backstop on the transition field?
Not me. They can do what they want, not me. We asked for that area to be opened.
So you want me to tear down four fields?
My opinion on that, that was not supposed to be fields there.
I understand. My, my question tonight is, do you want me to, do you want me to tear down four fields?
We weren't, we weren't going to spend, paying our attorney to be here for four hours doing this again.
I understand.
And not to be mean or anything, but it costs us a lot for this. We've gone back and forth for four years about this. In order for us to develop, where do you want us to develop? I, I mean, if we're, we've got that little bit of area, the pool area, and sharing part of it in front of that stage. That's it. That's what we got. So if we were going to put anything down there, that's what I'm saying. And if that stays up there at the time we're doing plans and it's in the way, that field, we will come through. If that's what you're proposing, is to still keep that part. Because that was why that was left as open space area. You call that open space. It's not. You got defined field in there. How's anybody going to use that? Maybe I had it wrong from what I thought this was going to be, but that's just my opinion. You got the whole council. They may vote for you.
So with the revisions noted, is there sufficient support to advance this to Monday night's agenda?
Which revisions are we talking about?
The three that we talked about.
Okay, which is the, the money end they want lowered. They want the 3,000 taken off for their reimbursement.
Right.
Correct. That's two. And what was the third one?
That we would phase in the conversion of the fields.
So Scott.
Excluding that transitional one.
Scott, if, if we ask for the reduction for the three years, okay? But if the PICO bill belongs to us, leave it on there.
Well, I, I believe I heard that the deal was we were going to split it.
Well, whatever, but I'm just saying, to the councils, and I, and I appreciate your time. I'm just saying.
I'm happy to take more of your money.
No, I'm just saying, if you're going to split it, that's fine. I, I'm, I'm happy to split it. But I'm saying is if you're looking to remove it altogether, and that breaks our deal, then leave it on.
So back then, what was the amount that the borough would pay, was paying towards the concession stand? The large concession stand? What was the fee or the amount of money that the borough was paying as part of the, the large concession stand?
You mean for the electric?
A lot.
For the electric, I mean.
It's all year.
No, in the original, you had said something?
I think that was for the old concession stand and the new one. And it was a ma, max of 1,500.
So the borough paid up to a max of $1,500 for?
But it's not been, we've been paying it all.
Right. But a max of 1,500 for both concession stands?
Yeah. If it goes over, they pay it.
And the large one? And then baseball was supposed to pay the rest?
The difference.
Okay.
Didn't do that.
I wasn't having a problem with that being, but I don't want to change everything else.
So you want to split the 3,000 and 1,500 apiece? We're going to pay 1,500. They're going to pay 1,500? What's that?
Well, she's saying that was the original arrangement.
What's that? Yeah, just forward it.
I'm sorry?
Did you include the bills to us, like the other bills, the other fields? I mean, you just didn't have this ability. We didn't know the guys were incurred that cost down to 1,500.
I believe that's in the budget too.
Steve's been our treasurer for two years, and he's not incurred that.
You guys receive the free bills and send them to my house. I go, so if there's a fourth bill, just include the other three.
It's up to council. What do you want to do with that? Can't keep going back and forth with this. Let's go.
Give us both proposals. Their new one that they just proposed tonight and the one that we were given with the 7,000, and vote on it tomorrow, or Monday night.
All right, 7,000, but what the manager's asking is, they want this amended. They want this changed, this last one we just got.
I know.
Well, this last one that we just got, this counteroffer, this was changed. So I don't, I don't, I didn't get anything.
That's what I'm saying. It's the third change now.
Well, I don't know who, where the second change came from.
Now, the third one is a new one from them.
Was that something that you worked out with the borough manager?
I drafted the counteroffer.
So I say we vote on either one. Present two of them and vote for either one.
And shared it with the Little League.
We're not even dealing with the first one, right? Because it wasn't, you changed it anyway.
Correct.
Okay.
All right, so the first one.
The counter replaces the initial.
Okay. Now, this counter, what you're saying is going to stay as is, but the manager's asking if council wants to change any of these things on here that the Little League is now asking to change again.
So Little League is going to incur the cost of the electricity for both snack shacks?
That's what they just agreed to.
Yes.
So now we have two points we're going to change and amend for Monday. And that is phasing in the conversion of the fields and reducing the flat fee, permit fee from seven to five.
So that's what we're voting on?
He's asking if we have a consensus.
No.
We're asking if there's a consensus to support that.
No.
And this will be voted on Monday, correct?
Voted on Monday, hopefully, if there's a consensus to advance this.
You want this, you want this to stand as is?
I'll revise it, recirculate it, and we'll put it on the agenda for Monday.
Okay.
All right.
If that doesn't pass, then what happens?
God knows.
That will be up to you guys to decide.
I do appreciate the opportunity to speak tonight. I do.
Thanks, Jim.
Thank you for coming out.
Okay.
Believe it or not, I'm not done. Next, we wanted to hear from the borough engineer on the resolution on your agenda to establish standards and road specifications, and also to discuss MMA's road repaving partnership proposal from the last meeting. Good evening, Mr. Schroder.
Good evening. Good to see everyone. So in your packet, we had provided a set of standards and specifications that we've utilized before. They're pretty much borrowed from, pretty closely to what the state uses, what PennDOT uses for.
Make sure your mic is on, would you?
For, maybe I'm not close enough, for, for any kind of construction that occurs in the borough. So this, the. So these standards would apply to our public roads, and also if there are private developers that come in to construct new roads or to do work within our existing roads. So these apply to any utility company or any developer, and anyone that comes in for subdivision or land development. So it's a whole packet. It contains multiple pages of curb sidewalks, road, road restoration, and things of the sort. So we recommend that the council consider adopting these standards by resolution so that they are, they become the standard, they become enforceable, and we can use them going forward. And, you know, I know with the MMA, they have some projects in motion right now. So we may want to make an exception just to work through this year's projects and then work with them going forward in future years to come up with a way to work there, incorporate their projects into these standards as well. But, so, you know, we just recommend that they be adopted, and then there can be exceptions if things come up in the future.
We spoke about this, Kurt, and you were saying that what this does is once you do a road program and we invest that kind of money into it, a utility company or anyone else that would have to come out for some reason and open up that road, they're then responsible to make sure that they put it back to the standards that it was originally put in, correct?
Yeah, that's absolutely correct. And doing a comprehensive road paving program, if we decide to move forward with something like that and pave a substantial amount of roads throughout the borough, then we would want to have, this is a first step, put these on the books so that we preserve and protect that investment going forward. So some of the standards, some of the highlights of these standards are, if we pave a road and someone, even if somebody wants to bring in a new gas service to their existing home, and they want to cut a new opening just to make the connection to a gas main and bring a new gas lateral to their home, if we pave the road within five years, they would be required to use what's called an infrared patch repair, which is essentially instead of cutting an opening in the roadway and patching it with hot asphalt and then putting a tar seam joint around that patch, this is a technology, you come in, you actually reheat the existing asphalt, and it blends in the new asphalt, so it's a seamless repair. So it keeps from not just the unsightly look of the patch in a brand-new road, but also eliminates that joint that could allow water to infiltrate into it and then cause that asphalt to be compromised from its life expectancy. So we've adopted these ordinances in other municipalities. I think they've been very successful. Like I said, they're not uncommon. If PICO or Aqua or one of these utility companies were to go on a state road and ask for a state permit to install within their right-of-ways, it would be a very similar, if not identical, requirement. So for instance, if they're running a utility trench down the roadway, instead of just restoring the utility trench within the limits of their excavated area, it would be to, at minimum, mill and overlay the full travel lane width from center line to edge of pavement. Or if the utilities in the center of the road or if there are a lot of laterals that extend on either side of that utility trench, then they would do curb-to-curb. So it establishes kind of like a rulebook for how a road opening permit would. And, you know, it goes in with like the fee schedule tonight that you're considering. It's a similar type of something to get on the books. Here's a road opening permit application, here are our standards. And it keeps just, it's good timing to do it now considering that we're looking at trying to figure out how to pave roads that, you know, frankly, haven't paved for a very, very long time.
Correct.
Kurt, not to prolong this, but there's been a lot of talk about roads around here lately. Could you give us, for the new council members, general context of road conditions, especially base and subbase?
Sure. I mean, look.
And what we're dealing with there?
Not unlike many things in an old borough, the infrastructure is very old. So, you know, we're dealing with, municipal authority deals with old utility pipes. We're dealing with old technology of constructing roads. The curbs are old. The spec that these roads were built to, usually there's not a lot of bituminous asphalt on the roadways. They do tend to have, some of them, I mean, everyone is different. Depends on when it was built and how it was built. But traditionally, we find a couple inches of asphalt, and then, most commonly in a borough of this age, are number fours and screenings, which is a ballast with small stones mixed into it. It's a pretty good road base. A lot of people say it's the only way to build a road even today. But the roads in general haven't been paved in a very, very long time. There hasn't been many full road resurfacing done unless there was a utility that was put in. So we looked at, we didn't go out and do a real careful review of the whole thing, but just in general, we looked at what roads are needed, what percentage. We kind of just played broad numbers, what we think. Let's say we estimate 80% or 90% of all the roads had to be resurfaced. We inventoried what the amount of square yards would be and what the cost based on a large-scale comprehensive paving program would yield. And it's probably just order of magnitude, we're looking at like $5 million to mill and pave 80% to 90% of the roads. And that doesn't include doing any curb work. It includes a percentage for doing base repair, where there might be some soft spots underneath the road, just to patch repair those areas. And it seems like a lot of money. It seems like maybe too much to undertake in one shot. But a lot of municipalities are looking at doing that and have done that because the alternative is to do only a couple roads each year. And if you look at what the annual budget of liquid fuels funding coming in the borough is, and you try to figure out how many roads you can do per year, you're only talking two or three roads. And you're paying a premium cost because there's not a lot of efficiency in doing a small batch of roadways each year. And the scariest part is if we do two or three roads per year, which is what our annual budget allows, it would extend the time out to about 40 years before we're able to get to that last road that already has been paved for 30, 40, 50 years.
Correct.
So we're still in a real good market right now for borrowing money. The bond market's decent, there's banks that are competitive. And it's something definitely strongly to consider is trying to do a large scale. Doesn't have to be the whole thing. Maybe it could be a substantial amount, but not the entire. But it really, if you look at, the other thing we did was we applied, if you do two or three roads a year over 35 years, and you apply a 3% cost escalator per year to the construction cost, that's an average kind of, you know, inflation cost. It ends up costing nine and a half million dollars by the time you're done. You know, it's future cost compared to present cost, but it's still, there's some sense in doing a large-scale paving program in one year, maybe two years. We don't recommend doing it this year, of course, because there's some good planning that has to occur. And we also want to take the time to notify utility companies so that we're not paving a road, and then they say, well, we have these mains we want to replace next year. Now we have to pave the whole road because of bad planning. We want to get notices out to the utility companies if we move forward in this direction and find out what their projects are that they're planning, and perhaps work with them, because we've had good success, too, where if they're on the hook for paving half the road and they're doing a small quantity, they may be better off just putting a base course in, leaving that sit for a period of time until we do a comprehensive paving program, take a fee in lieu for what their half the road would cost, and we may end up getting 60%, 70% of the full road paid for with that economy of scale for the, you know, the numbers are terrific when you do that big of a project. So.
Now, can you and John speak to the microscopic project that we've been talking about?
Yeah, I think this concept through, and I'll let John speak.
Bring us from macro to micro.
This year, these standards create a problem for John. John has a project in a pipeline. He's already put in mains and is looking to get some cooperation to pave those roads. So I'll let John talk about the specifics of that.
Before you let John jump out, can I ask, what's our expected life on a road?
It's a great question, and it's not an easy one to answer because all roads are different. And there's always a scenario where you pave a road and you run a loaded triaxle on it before you pave it, and the base is really tight and it looks like it's going to be a great road base. And then you find that there's a groundwater issue that creeps up from underneath the roadway, and you couldn't have foreseen that that was there ahead of time. So you might have some problem areas and some small, isolated. But you look at the roads, they haven't been paved in how many years?
10.
If not, three times that, maybe 30.
Some of them.
And they're still there. They're not great, but you got 30 years out of it. You're not going to expect to get 30 years out of these roads. Maybe you'll get 20, 25 years. But some you might only get eight years. And it all depends on volume. It depends on what's beneath it, the base course that's underneath it. It depends on whether there's groundwater present or there's good drainage, all things that we really can't put a?
Is it not in our favor that we're a river town?
No, I think it is. I think it is in some regards because you usually get better drain soils underneath it. So you're not trapping a lot of groundwater like you would if you have clay or rock or things like that.
Rich is dying to say something. Is this about roads?
If you look at Part 3 in the new fee schedule?
Oh, not this again.
And one of the upgrades made to the fee schedule is that, now, no road opening permit that is issued without approval by the borough engineer requires a professional services agreement to pay for the engineers' time for basic review as well as inspection, and also establishes 18-month maintenance bond for road repairs. So that is built into the fee schedule that you have.
Nice. Thank you. Thank you.
Don't scowl at me.
You're the road cutter, John.
John? You're the one that likes to tear them up.
Yeah. I'm also the only one that's, I'm also the only guy that's paved a road in the last 20 years here.
This is true.
I think the last borough road or street that was paved was McKinley Avenue, I think. We've paved Harrison, we've paved Maple, we've paved part of West Maple. We've paved Oliver Moreau, part of Bank Street. We've put curbing in Bank Street, curbs in South Harding, part of Woodland Avenue. And the project that I've spoken with Scott about and Kurt about is our Crown Street and Stockham Avenue Water Main.
And you did Climber, don't forget about Climber.
We did Climber, that's right. We did Climber and actually part of Cox Avenue is part of that when we put the 16-inch main in for the water tower. That's correct. Forgot about that. And actually, there's a reason why it's important for you to know some of that. We actually have a lot of experience at this point with some of the borough roads and streets. So there are some things that I was concerned about when I looked at the proposed standard, design standards. Not that I think they're bad, and just for the record, let me say, we support them. There's absolutely, we're not, I'm not here to suggest that you should not adopt those standards. You should adopt those standards. But just so I don't miss the two important asks or points that the MMA has, let me tell you what they both are right now. One is that in the course of adopting these standards, you insert a sentence somewhere in the actual standard that memorializes the discretion of the borough engineer to approve alternate plans or design standards for restoration of some of the existing streets. And in particular, we have already prepared a general cross, a general profile for the restoration of Crown, Stockham, and parts of East Maple, East Palmer, East Franklin that probably is, once it was explained to me, probably is slightly better than the mill and overlay that would be provided for in these design specs. So I think we can work that out without any problem. But I just would like there going forward to be an assurance that we can get an approval from the borough engineer for something like that when the issue comes up. Bearing in mind that we're talking about streets that don't have any real stone subbase, that don't have any base bituminous material, and in many instances, don't even have more than two or three inches of existing asphalt on them to begin with. I just didn't want to be in a position where we were going to be building a new street in a situation where you're starting with almost a dirt road to begin with.
I don't think there would be an issue with the solicitor building into the resolution that kind of discretion for the borough engineer.
It'd be fairly simple, and I'd be happy to talk with them about that before the next meeting. The other ask is that we, at some point, get a commitment from borough council on what we discussed with respect to the Crown Street and Stockham Avenue project. You'll recall that I had talked, following a staff meeting briefly, about that. And following up with that, I did, in fact, submit alternate sets of work papers. They're not really plans because I don't want to ask our engineers to develop complete specifications for two different approaches to the same project without knowing what the borough is willing to do. But we did provide copies of work papers for a Plan A and a Plan B that quantify somewhat conservatively, and by conservatively, I mean too much, high on the high side, what the likely cost of paving and some curb replacement that the MMA will be doing would cost. And we've asked for the borough to split the additional cost, the delta in engineer speak, of the better approach to it. If the borough is willing and able to do that this year, we can add another full block of Maple Avenue, which is in pretty bad shape from Hillside down to Delmore. We can do a full width repaving of the part of Hillside Avenue in which we've replaced Water Main. And there's some other, there's some other short runs of paving that we can replace. Now, bear in mind that we're not asking for you to contribute the difference between the less expensive, it's not cheap, but the less expensive plan or the more expensive plan. We're asking you to kick in half of it. So we're basically saying we'll match dollar for dollar the additional cost, recognizing that some of that additional cost will be curbing materials, which you cannot spend liquid fuels tax on. We understand that. Liquid fuels money. So with that in mind, we're only asking for contribution that would be attributed to the paving piece of the additional work.
And the cost estimate for that was, in the documents distributed to council, I believe it was $77,000?
That would be your, that would be your share. The difference between the Plan A and Plan B is about 154,000. The less expensive plan, we're committed to spending $400,000, basically as it is. The more expensive plan's about 550. Now, keep in mind, that's only the paving and restoration part of it. We've already spent $800,000 on the piping, on the water side of it. So the project for us, when we're done, is going to be about $1 million, too. So we're spending about $1.2 million. This is going to basically give you completely new infrastructure in about 6,000 feet of streets.
So if council is agreeable to this, it will be subject to preapproval by PennDOT because it would be our intention to use liquid fuels funds to pay for it.
And how much of the budget for the year would that be approximately?
How much of the budget for the year would that be? Well, we had about $140,000 that we were going to make available in uncommitted funds for road projects. So if we're postponing that with the intention of developing a comprehensive road repaving program, as Mr. Schroder indicated, then we have $77,000 easily available in our current liquid fuels funds to partner with the municipal authority on this project.
And I would argue, Mike, that you're, keep in mind that you're getting a benefit from those monies in this calendar year anyway. Because we will be repaving over a mile of streets where we also will be doing some curb and base repairs. We're not just talking about throwing down a layer of tar here. I don't, I can't do the? I, I don't, I, I can't do the, the engineering speak for you as well as Kurt could or Chris Halli, who met with us earlier this evening, could. But, I mean, we do, we do test the base, we do test the base, we do essential base repairs. We do mill and grade all of the, all of the street. And this would all, most of this would be from curb to curb. So you'd have essentially new streets in those parts of the borough where we have put new, new water mains. So you will have something that you can show, show folks.
Thank you.
It's not without, it's not without some benefit, some immediate benefit.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you both very much.
Thank you.
Kurt, can I ask what your thoughts on that are?
On the MMA's project? I apologize. I thought I'd emailed and I may have in my multiple power outages over the last, literally, I'd have fifteen emails open and I'd lose them all and the power went out. But the information, John had talked to us about their planned project previously, and his engineer had reached out to us. I haven't had a chance to really, other than tonight, seeing their plan and getting out there and seeing the roads. And I don't have a great answer for you tonight just because I got a lot of information tonight. Haven't had a chance to go dig into it.
I can, I can promise you he'll be a hundred percent for it.
He's going to meet you in the parking lot afterwards and talk to you.
And John, when, when do you need our commitment by?
Well, sooner is better.
Monday night.
Monday would be wonderful, Justin, because the, the fact is that.
I get you have to go out to bid and.
Joe and Bradley, the, the, the water main contractors are done. All of the, all the mains are in, all of the residential services have been connected. So the sooner we can do that, the sooner we can put bid specs together for the project. Primarily because we can't really spec the project in any finished way until we know which, which plan we're going to do, Plan A or Plan B. Scott's got a cop, a PDF copy of those sets of plans. If anybody wants them, they're, I think you can, we don't have any.
I think they were distributed.
Yeah, he sends them to everyone's emails and they downloaded them.
And just, you know, for the record, I, I'm not unmindful of the need, not just to cooperate. Of course, we understand the notion of cooperation. But given, given the, given the experience we've had, and by we, I'm talking about everybody in the MMA involved in these street, these, these water main projects. We've been doing this for a long time and we've done, we're up to now about twenty-two thousand feet of main replacement that we've done in the last five or six years. Which includes, for the most part, not in every case, but for the most part, a lot of street repair as well. So we've got a pretty decent track record of knowing what we're doing, I think. We can, we can work with whatever approach you might have to doing of street repairs and renovations. It's a chicken and egg problem, but, but we can, we can work that out. We can work it out.
All right.
So Madam President, is there any objection to us including these two items on your agenda Monday night?
Yeah, unless they change their mind to park a lot.
I can look at it more carefully over the next couple of days and get with John. And we can meet out on the site and just make sure we're all on the same page. Thank you.
You can get all that information ready for Monday then?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Thank you both very much.
Thank you.
And believe it or not, I'm still not finished. The police chief is here.
Really quick, before the engineer leaves. Sorry.
I'm sorry.
We had the ordinance for the four-way stop sign on Washington Street.
Correct.
Can that be put on Monday or is there a reason that's being held up?
Yeah, that has to go on your April agenda because it has to be advertised.
Got it.
We weren't able to meet the advertising requirements for this coming Monday.
And Scott, real quick, the two other resolutions, you want us to talk?
Yes, if you want to talk about them briefly, because they're on their agenda for Monday night, the CDBG grant applications.
Yeah, I think we might have already discussed it previously. If there's any questions, we can answer them. But there's two applications for CDBG funding for this year through the county. The one is for three hundred thousand for the Williamson Park Playground. Last year we received a hundred ninety-two thousand. This year's application's for another three hundred. We talked to CDBG. We don't have the option of deferring the first batch of money. So we will have to build half the playground, which is the smaller children's portion of the playground. And then we'd be hopeful that we get this funding to do the toddler through, you know, twelve-year-old playground next year. The other application is for the continuation of the Summer Seat property, former MR Rider School. And it's five hundred and sixty thousand dollars for the application. That includes reconstructing the perimeter concrete sidewalks around the entire block and doing ADA curb ramps at each of the intersections and curb, curb sidewalk and curb ramps.
Yeah, for those of you who were with us in the snow this morning, you may have noticed some of the sidewalks are like, look like a roller coaster.
Yeah, definitely would help with the, the bones of the park as you proceed with that. It definitely needs to be done up there. So, thank you.
Before you leave, I have more comments on that one.
One more.
I'm glad to see that, you know, your list of projects is growing, that your grants are starting to be as long as the list of projects. But for some of us who haven't been here on council last year or the year before, is there some sort of plan in place for what's, what's phase one? Is there any paperwork you can provide to us?
I'm sorry, for the?
For the Williamson Park. You have, you're going for phase two. I have no idea what phase one is or what it looks like or anything like that.
Playground. Yeah. There are concept plans for the playground. There's not engineered drawings yet.
Okay. Could you just forward those on to Scott to send to us?
Sure. Yeah. Yeah, there's different types of equipment that's been cited by the landscape architect we can send to you.
And let me see what else was here.
That was for, the phase one was for the tot lot?
It's for the, I forget the, it's like two to, two to five, two to five-year-olds.
Okay.
And then there's five to twelve-year-old. So we broke it down.
So phase one is, it's two to five?
Yes.
That's the portion that's already been awarded.
Right.
And then the three hundred that you're going for next is for the five to twelve?
Correct.
And also on your report, you had mentioned that the originally planned roads to be resurfaced in two thousand eight will cost approximately four hundred and eighty thousand dollars. Can we get a copy of whatever plan that was or anything? I don't have any paperwork on it.
That was a list that we had gotten from John, from Public Works, on a couple of the most critical roads that need paving. And just doing a quick quantity takeoff on the extent of those roads and just doing a mill and overlay with some base repair. The engineer's estimate came out around four hundred and eighty thousand, which obviously, we just talked about the current committed budget to paving roads was around a hundred and forty thousand. So obviously, we wouldn't be able to do just those high-need roads.
If you want.
If you want.
And your other items on here, number one and two, I'll just make it quick. I'd just like to see at some point a timeline on when you expect things to be moving along on the obstruction project. You know, when we can expect to see things, and it can shift every month as it gets updated or pushed back.
Sure. With the Brook Street project, we just had a big stakeholders meeting here with a lot of the different trail network groups, DCNR, the Friends of the Delaware Canal and so on and so forth. Pennsylvania Environmental Council, of course, they're helping sponsor the project. But that project is still going through its PennDOT gauntlet. Takes literally years to get it through that, and it's at the mercy of PennDOT. We'll submit something, we'll get feedback back three months later, submit it back two weeks after and wait another three to five months. I think we've been waiting over a year for the environmental review. And there's just nothing that, that we can do to advance that any quicker. But we're still hoping next year it can actually be put out for construction. Again, at the mercy of PennDOT, they bid it.
We have a grant in line to pay for the construction?
Yeah, actually, the circuit trails, I forget that, there's a specific line item in the tip, which is the Transportation Improvement Program. It's D V RPC's big funding bucket. And there's money.
I just gave you something on that.
Set aside that, that they believe they can get this project fully funded with.
And how about the levy? Is there any work being done on the, you got a hundred and forty thousand dollar grant for, to start the study? Have we started doing any work on that yet?
We have. We haven't really dug in, and that's for a couple of reasons. One is because we don't want to start chewing through that money without having a very, very defined path forward. And FEMA actually, we didn't realize this, we were fortunate enough to catch wind of this. They are working on releasing, they're supposed to release it in February. We haven't heard if they have yet. But a whole levy approval accreditation program, like a guidebook on how to go through that process. So we want to start off by following that program once it comes out. And we're actually going to recommend that the borough bring on a special consultant to assist us. And we have experience working with this individual. She really did all of FEMA's maps. She helped write this program. So we think she could help shepherd this more effectively even than we can. We can still do a lot of the support work, survey work, geotech work, things like that. But we, we're in discussions with her to get her engaged to, to help us out. She works for a large firm locally.
On a positive note, though, we do, we do have a.
She was with Dewberry, she just left. She's now with T and M Associates in Philadelphia.
We do have the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers coming out this summer to look at the levy.
Yeah, we've been in discussion with the Army Corps, with DEP, and they actually were aware of the grant. When I called to tell them we got the grant, they're like, oh yeah, I heard you guys got the grant. So these guys, there's a lot of agencies and a lot of elected officials. There's a lot of eyes on, on the levy and, and the effort to get it accredited. So I think we've gotten, finally, it takes a long time for these things to come together. The funding, getting enough community, you know, agency support and all. But as far as just driving forward with the study, we're starting, we've started, but not in any real aggressive fashion because we really want to make sure we don't burn through a lot of money and not have a lot to show for it.
Correct. Okay. Anything else for the engineer, from anyone? Okay, we're good. Got you done with him?
I'm done with him. I've had enough of him for one day.
Thanks, Kurt. I appreciate it.
Thanks, Kurt. But actually, I'm not finished. If we could have the police chief, the chief wants to talk to us about an application we received for Williamson Park from Resurrected Life Evangelistic Church for the 2018 Spring Carnival. He has some concerns about it. Chief?
Good evening, council. The carnival over the last four years since I've been here is a disaster waiting to happen. I ask you not to vote or vote negative for it. We have to supply police officers to, for. Last year I had to call in mutual aid because I had threats on the phone that the gangs are bringing guns over. So I had to bring two dogs in as well as six other police officers. That's not the kind of event we want to have here in our borough. I worked it two nights. The crowd that comes is not our Marsville residents. So I do not see any upside to it. But I will leave that to your decision. But I do not support having that carnival here. We will do everything to make everybody safe and we will supply the manpower. But this year, if they are going to have it, I'm going to double the manpower that we had last year. And that's going to be a lot of money on their upfront cost. But that's the only way. And you always got to remember about the backend. Something happens, no matter how much security we give to this carnival, we're still ultimately responsible. That if someone does get hurt, we're responsible for it and we will see it in a future lawsuit. So please consider that when you're thinking about whether we want to have this event here in our park. Okay?
If I could say, I have to agree a hundred percent. When I saw that come through the memo, we had talked about it last year, some of the issues that were happening and the previous year. It's one of the reasons it's a rotary, finally phased theirs out because of the problems it was causing. Residents were complaining. Police officers, I know, were tasked to be down there handling that stuff. I don't know that it gives a positive thing for, for the borough. I think it's, it causes more problems than it's worth doing it. Not anything against the church. I just think that it's, it's not something that seems to be working down there for the park and for the police department. I think it puts a lot of stress on, on the department to have to handle that. And I'm not the only council that has mentioned it before. So I actually was going to bring this up for discussion myself. My concerns were very much on the same path as you. So I'm glad you mentioned something about it.
I have to agree. I was actually a pretty loud voice with the rotary. That's why the rotary doesn't, doesn't support it anymore.
Is there a consensus of the council to pull this from the agenda and have the management deny it? Or would you like to vote on it Monday night?
I, I would like to ask consensus of the council. At first, I've had anybody would like to discuss it other than, than me and Mike weighing in. If you would like to say something about it, please do it this time and we can.
By the way, I love carnivals. It's just a bad idea.
I took my grandchildren several times years before. But last year, everyone I talked to said they weren't going down there, any, any resident in the borough. They said they're not taking their children down there. So I really don't think it would behoove us to approve it because it's not going to be the residents going there.
Anyone else have any comment about it?
I'm in agreement with everyone else.
Agreed. We have, if we take a consensus and just pulling this from the agenda and the manager can send a message back or letter back to the church with.
I'm fine with that.
Our, our decisions. So if I could have a approval unanimously from everyone, yay?
I would like it pulled.
Pull, yes. To pull it. Any nays against it? Okay, then I agree. The council will have it removed. Thank you, chief, for speaking.
Well, there is one more thing. The chief asked, and we recirculated information about police vehicles a couple of weeks ago. Actually, I believe it was Mr. Parker, who's not here tonight, who had asked for inventory of the condition and status of the police fleet. The chief provided that. I think the way we left it at the last agenda meeting was that council wasn't saying no, but we wanted to wait maybe until the fall. But I think the chief would like to revisit the issue.
Yes, I would. Thank you. Just to state that I'm asking you to vote for the financing for these new vehicles, knowing that these vehicles are not a luxury for these officers. These, this is essential equipment for these officers. This is their office for twelve hours. There is, it's essential equipment. And also something that was spoken about by the, your engineer, was that we have a very good rate on this, at four point, four point two four percent. That rate will be going up in March. Okay, that's, they've already warned me of that. So this is, the rate that I have now is only locked in till March thirty-first. Okay, it's in the budget. It was talked about at length back in November when we did the budget. And that this, what this, what was planned for to do with that money was to buy new vehicles and continue keeping the fleet new. So with that, I just want to reemphasize, this is essential equipment for these officers, not a luxury item. So I ask you to please vote for the equipment that these officers need. Thank you.
Chief, if you get the three vehicles, if you're approved to get the three vehicles this year, how will you be handling next year and the year after that?
Well, at that point, we'll have three brand-new vehicles that are all under warranty. And then we still have.
To buying one a year or how will you be handling that?
I didn't follow. We'll have three, we have brand-new vehicles. And plus the vehicles that I have now will have thirty-seven, thirty, forty thousand miles on them. So I got a lot of miles left on those cars. And I'm getting rid of the older cars, the two thousand and seven, the two thousand and eight, the ones that have a hundred and seventy thousand miles that are out there on these roads. These roads are killing my cars.
You're replacing them with the newer ones that you want to buy?
Yes. So I'm getting rid of cars. I'm trading them in. And that was in the plan that they're being traded in.
I think what she's getting at, chief, is your plan is every three years, you're buying three cars. You're not going to have any, as of right now, you're not going to have any cars next year or year after.
We're coming back with the same thing. It's what we did three years ago. You know, you won't hear anything about vehicles again for three more years.
Yeah.
And in three more years, I'll say, I'd like to buy three more.
But every year, we'll have budgeted forty thousand dollars because we'll have to be paying the loan on it.
Correct, like we did for the last three years.
Asking, yeah.
Yeah. And you, and you guys do that every year anyway. You put forty thousand dollars in the line item for that. So this isn't nothing, you know, that's unexpected. It's, it's your cost of doing business with the police department. And it's the most efficient way to do it, to have three at a time as compared to just doing one. Because then you're coming back every time and, you know. So it is the most efficient way. And these officers deserve to have good equipment that they work with.
I, I think for me, one of the biggest issues we need, maybe this next budget to straighten out is, maybe the other managers ran a little bit differently. I think as courtesy to the council who handles the budget. I think as courtesy to the council, who handles the budget, our new finance director that's helping us straighten things out, our new manager, is that we, we have the budget. The revenues aren't in yet, and that was our thing with this, was that instead of buying them in January, before any of that money comes in, even though it's in that budget, we prefer that to be at later part of the year. It's just something we're trying to transition from, where you just want to order the cars now. It's not like it was a dire emergency at this moment. That's the difference between what we're saying, is that you're saying-
What's, what's your advantage of waiting three months? You're going to say that we're not going to have the money in the budget?
We're just saying, no. What we're saying is, most times with most municipalities, what we're trying to get at doing is our big purchase like that, even on our end, on, on the borough side, for heavy equipment, trucks, anything like that, would be at the later part of the year, not in the beginning. Most municipalities don't do that in the beginning of the year. They, they have their budgets set up, but not January 1st, or ordering heavy, heavy equipment or cars and stuff. They wait until halfway through the year to do that. That's the only thing we were saying was the difference.
Ma'am, ma'am, I did explain that at length of when this first payment was going to be due.
It would be May, I think you said at the last meeting.
It was in May. We're five months into the year at that point, and that's why we did it that way, because the tax dollars come in starting in April. So I realized that, and that's why we set it up the way we did. But if I continue to wait till October, like I have every other year, come October, I get my, I get cut off at my knees and told I can't spend another dime. And by that point, at least two or three of these cars are going to be dead.
By October?
Well, I got one now that we're deciding whether we're going to send down to the shop now, the one with 175,000 miles on it.
That's one of the ones you're getting rid of. But I mean, the ones are actually, that I saw from the list, that the main newer ones are all-
They're fine.
Oh, okay.
They're fine. But do you also realize that if I'm running those, and I'm not running some of the older cars at the same time, those miles are just going to run up? There is a plan involved in this hall that we, you know, that you circulate the vehicles. The officers have cars that they use, and if they don't use that, they have another one that they're assigned to. So that's how we, we didn't just run three brand-new cars and just run the miles all the way up. We're still using some of the older cars. And that's how we were able to keep the fleet in, in pretty good shape. The fleet's in decent shape right now.
They tried to disperse the miles among the whole fleet.
Right. And that's what we do. But like I explained, Expedition, it's on its last legs. The Crown Vic's on its last legs. It's missing, it's doing, you know, it's doing all kinds of things. So we're, we're not sending it down to the shop to get fixed, hoping, you know, not to, not to throw good money at bad projects.
Regardless of what council decides, are we going to move away from rear-wheel-drive vehicles and go all-wheel?
Absolutely. Scott, they don't even sell them anymore.
Yeah, good, good.
You can't buy them.
Good.
It's either the, it's either the Tauruses, which I'll never buy another Taurus again, or your Explorers that we can use out in the snow like we did the other night.
Okay.
Okay? Thank you.
Thanks, chief. I'm sorry, but I'm still not done.
One more, one more thing?
One more thing.
I'm hanging with Justin too long.
Yeah, I know. Literally. We've been discussing back and forth a number of housekeeping things with council, like maybe making the meetings start at 7:00 instead of 7:30. Maybe one meeting a month versus two, maybe eliminating or, or doing some of the reports in writing in your packets instead of verbally at the meeting, unless there's a question. And whether or whatnot you wish to reaffirm a prior decision on the minutes and stick with summary minutes versus verbatim minutes, which are much shorter since these meetings are recorded. But now that we're in a public setting, can we make some decisions on these things?
Yes. I had spoke to you as far as the, the minutes tonight, that I wanted to put a motion on the agenda for that, to actually reaffirm a decision that was made by council by a motion several years ago, and it's just gone back and forth, not, not implemented. And you weren't here for that. So for you, and for the benefit of the staff, I also spoke with Virginia about this, it would be a blessing for her to be able to get these down to a summarization like the council originally wanted it to be, instead of these novels that are turning out to be 46 and 48 pages long. So we want to put a vote up for that, to just reaffirm something that the council had already voted on before, so that it makes it official. This is the way it will be, not back and forth. It would be a summarization of those minutes. And what's legal to be on there also for your, your votes and who, who votes that by the sunshine law, so. But everything else would be a, a summarization to cut that down.
Okay.
Okay?
So we're good on that one. What about the 7:00 PM start time versus 7:30?
If I, could I jump in? Do you want? So Scott, I'm fine with all of the items you listed, except the one meeting a month. And here's why. We're over two hours into this meeting, just talking about the next meeting still.
Yes, I know.
My only concern is that one meeting a month turns into a 10-hour meeting. So until, for me, I'd be okay with all the bullet points except that one, until this is like a 20-minute, hey, we're good, let's go, let's do it. And then I would consider that. But right now, I don't see it being, I just don't see it, how it would work.
So maybe in a couple of months' time, you'd be all right with that?
Yeah, because that's the only point that I would have a concern with.
Our generating needs get shorter than four hours?
Yeah. And we have to work on that. We have to figure out how to do that, guys, because this is, again, over two hours, and we're just talking about the next meeting.
Exactly. So we-
And we're still on your report.
Yes.
Scott?
So 7:00? Starting in April?
Everyone okay with that? Anyone not okay?
I have to tell you, man, at present, the only person I haven't heard from on this issue was Councilman Parker. So, and I know he travels a distance. So can we check with him?
Sure.
Before we make it final?
Sure, absolutely.
Other than that, April, there's Local Government Week. So rejoice in the streets. We'll be talking to your junior councilperson about what can be done to honor Local Government Week. Unless you have any other questions for me, I think I'm happily finished.
Okay.
Apologies, if I can break in. I'm so sorry. I'll try to be brief. Let's hope this is brief. I was going to wait until the end, but I figured this is, since it's a request for the borough manager, this might be the time for it. So I apologize if this is out of order. Just since the county, and specifically Michael Rodig, he'd worked, they worked so hard on the downtown plan and the revitalization overall, I wanted to get council's request to direct the borough manager to start communication with the Bridge Commission to either acquire, slash, take over, or take control over that property that's located at the south end of our park. It's located along Bridge Street. It's just a slab of property that the Bridge Commission owns, and I think that they would be willing to part with it. So I just wanted to see if we could direct the borough manager to just open up those doors of communication.
I'm, I'm good with that. When I looked at it, it was titled to them, I believe, in the '90s. I think we sold it to them for about $8,000.
I actually have a meeting coming up with the executive director of the Bridge Commission, so I can broach it with him then if there's no objection.
No, I think that's a good idea. Very good. Thank you, Kurt.
Thank you.
Okay, I have two things for the borough manager. Scott, Trash Collection, I understand you had a meeting with them yesterday?
Yes. News travels fast.
Trash that wasn't collected, is what I'm speaking of. I understand that they wouldn't go down the streets with low wires.
There are still, I believe, two streets in the borough that have issues with low wires, so they will not take the truck through. And I know there were a couple of locations where cans were not, not close enough to the street and were impeded by a parked vehicle, and they weren't able to get to those.
Okay, because someone on Center said there's no low-hanging wires there, so perhaps that was the issue with the car. But on Harrison Avenue, I know they did the other three blocks, but the first block, they didn't collect. And I don't know if that was because of a wire or not, but-
Okay. Give me the names of the streets and all.
Harrison.
Harrison.
Yeah, the first block. And Center.
Okay.
They're the only two that I have the names of right now.
Okay.
If I get any more, I'll let you know.
Yeah, shoot me an email. But I'll, I'll speak to the contractor tomorrow about that.
Because I know there was a trash truck. It may not have been ours. It did go down our street yesterday, and the two low-hanging wires by the row houses aren't affected.
Okay.
So, you know, we don't want them to not come until the wires are fixed, because that may take another month. And meanwhile, trash will be building up. And one other issue.
One more thing?
I have, yes. We all know they're going to start Friday on Route 1 with the 32 ramp.
Yes.
All right. So what they're going to do, from my understanding, is block off the exit from 13 going north. They're going to have it open, but it's just going to be able to go straight north on Route 1, not go, not exit onto 32. So in that case, we're going to be having a lot of vehicles coming off of South Pennsylvania, onto South Pennsylvania Avenue, and they're going to be at that light that's flashing. When they do stop them from coming on 32, is there any way? We could have an officer there for a day or two, maybe, to monitor that traffic or do something? And, and can we have the Bridge Commission turn the light back on? Because I think they're either going to be coming and making lifts-
Actually, that's our traffic light.
Okay. They're either going to come down that ramp and make a left onto South Pennsylvania Avenue coming towards town, or they're going to be going across and going back up onto Route 1.
I asked the engineer to look at that, and we will speak with PennDOT. For some reason, when the pre-con meetings with PennDOT took place on this project, no one from our borough was-
They weren't involved, yeah. And we're going to be the ones that are affected.
Was there, although I'm told we were invited.
Okay.
So I'm, I'm not sure what happened there. But we, we can certainly speak with the chief and see if they, police can assist with traffic control. And yes, the engineer is looking at what should be done with that traffic light-
Yeah.
Given the circumstances.
Because you know the issues we already have with the trucks. We don't need more, because that's mainly trucks that come down off of that 13 ramp.
Mm-hmm.
So it's going to be one big mess, and I'm not looking forward to it.
Yeah. And we, we do have, I recently saw that a, one of the trucks lost one of its containers, actually, down there.
Lost its rear wheels and the container under the bridge.
Same place that the tractor trailer lost, it's load last year, lost those tubes-
Yeah, lost the load under the bridge, yeah.
Right up by the sidewalk area, correct? So it's getting a little-
It's a big issue. And there's a very large pothole on Philadelphia Avenue when you turn off of Pennsylvania Avenue into West Philadelphia.
Okay.
And just filling it with, cold patch does not work. It goes all the way across the road. So I'm actually avoiding it. I don't go down Philadelphia Avenue anymore to go to my house. I go to Cleveland and around, just to avoid Philadelphia Avenue. And with the trucks, it's just getting worse.
All right. Okay. Is that all for the borough manager at this point?
Yes, thank goodness.
Everyone's done? Not one, not one more thing?
I need a water.
Okay. Okay. Then we'll just get down to what our action items are here. 9A would be authorization to permit the Friends of the Marshville Dog Park to hold an Easter egg hunt event on Sunday, March 25th, 2018, at the Marshville Dog Park.
This is for dogs?
You all got this in your, in your packet?
Dog egg hunt?
I guess Justin could speak about this, correct?
It's a dog egg hunt, it's actually being done in conjunction with House Paul's Veterinary Service. They're basically running it and working with us, the dog park. And it's open to the public and the dogs.
Do the dogs go get the eggs?
Yeah, I guess they put eggs down with numbers in it, and the dog goes up and sniffs it, and you pick up the egg, you get the number, and you go get a treat, or there's a treat inside, or you get a prize at the prize table.
Well, the, I, I know that the parade that you guys had for Halloween was just a hoot, and a lot of people showed up for that.
That was lots of fun.
We got a lot of really nice pictures. It was, it was pretty amazing and adorable. You wouldn't have thought that, but it was lots of fun. So we'll have to come down there and see the eggs go. I know what my dog would do with those eggs, just saying. Okay. Next one is 9B, authorization to permit the Girl Scout Color Fun 5K Run and Walk and Color Fest Party in Williamson Park on Sunday, May 20th, 2018. Pending final details and all approvals. They've been doing this for quite a few years now.
Yeah, I think this is their third year doing it.
Yeah, it's, fourth year? Yeah, I always see the pictures go up on, on Facebook. It's pretty funny when they all start coming out with all the colors at the end. Okay. We remove 9C. So the next one, I guess, would be then 9C instead of 9D would be, which, I'm just going to run through these since we've been going through them already. These resolutions were already spoken about by our engineer, so I'm not going to go over them again. Emma Ryder won. The specifications and design standards, Keystone Municipal Services for the resolution that they need for the fee schedule. The only other one is, the last one is the 9H, authorization to enter into the legal representation to take action in the opioid crisis, which is spoken about tonight. So does anyone have anything they wish to say about that? It's, it's going to go on? Everyone's okay with that? No more questions? Okay? All right.
If council is sufficiently comfortable, I'd like to let the borough engineer and the code enforcement officer know that they don't need to attend Monday night's meeting.
Okay.
I'm good.
Good.
Okay.
They're saying, thank you. Okay, under, let me make sure I get this straight, because I, I have some added things for the agenda, so I'll just let everybody know. I did speak with the solicitor before the meeting to let him know about this also. Under unfinished business, 10A is the appointment of the new second ward councilperson, filling the vacancy left by the resignation of Bill Pepitone. After appointment, the individual will complete required paperwork and be sworn in. So I will just say that we will, well, the borough manager will have here blank copies of the residency and the notarization form that they will need. So as that person gets voted in, they can then fill out the paperwork. The mayor can swear someone in, as well as our borough manager, is a licensed notary, can also do it. Belief Jones, even a licensed notary also. So that's several that are here the night of the meeting, unless someone else is here that would like to do it for whoever that appears to be. But we thought we'd offer that and let them know that the paperwork you would need, you don't have to run out and get it, the blanks are here, and you can fill them out right after that vote comes down. The only thing I was going to say with this, because I'm adding another motion to this, would you like the other motion to come before this one, for Mr. Bill Pepitone, under new business, or, or no?
No, no. Go ahead. Read us the next one that you would wish to add.
Under 10B, because this is unfinished business, is to rescind the resolution for for the Arts and Events Committee, number 808. This was something that was spoken about back about a month or so ago, when we were talking about the committees and condensing some of those that weren't being used. And this was one of the ones that, when we took the Recreation Advisory Board and brought it out of suspension, that's been since 2012, to make that active. And Arts and Events can just run through that, which it did before this was created, because it wasn't being used with all the members that it needed. So I had...
Said 808?
Yeah, 808.
Okay.
I have a copy of it here also. So I actually did contact PSAB just to make sure for myself how to, how to do that, how to rescind it. So Shelley Hawk did get back to me and gave the exact wording for it. So I'll give it to Scott. But it basically says that you will vote to rescind the original motion for that resolution, 808.
Yep, it's not an ordinance, so yeah.
Correct. So that's, that's how that would be done. And of course, remind everyone that there are positions. Make sure everybody gets the bylaws for the advisory board for the recreation. There are seven members that are on that. Our liaison for that, for the council, is Eileen Dreisbach. So those members, though, when they organize, pick their own president, vice president, and their secretary, or their main chair, if you want to call it, and their secretary. She is there only to break a tie if there is. She's not a voting body otherwise, she's our liaison. Or if it needs support, require them to have the meeting. And that's how it's set up in the bylaws. But I'll make sure that everybody gets those when they do apply and are appointed. Okay, just so we'll put that out there.
Just a quick question on that. Do we have any idea when we're going? You start putting that up so people can send in their letter of interest?
I had asked Virginia, she was actually busy updating those stuff because of the fact that with Bill Pepitone leaving, we now have to put whoever this new person on is in those other committees. And he was on, there's two of them, he's on there.
It is on the website already.
Yeah, Virginia was just working on it this past week. And we, correct. Yeah, and I, I haven't looked myself, but the Recreation Advisory positions, I think we were talking about putting them up either on the website as well as, yeah. Yeah, yeah. So once that's done, then, I know people have been asking about it, but they want to get their application in and, or the letter of interest, I'm sorry. And if anyone isn't out of that seven, believe me, there's plenty of things as a group they can do. Please come to those meetings and join in. They can always pair off if they're, if they're working on several things. So it'd be nice to get some people working on that and, and do some things. Okay, I think that was it under the unfinished business. Under new...
I'm sorry, was there a 10C?
No.
Oh, okay, sorry.
10A, 10B.
Gotcha.
That was under the unfinished. Under the new business, so there was two. 11A would, would be the summary minutes. So we want to put a motion up for that.
Motion to reaffirm prior decision.
Yeah, I said motion, yeah, to reaffirm the motion previously made by council to record the minutes, I'm sorry, the meeting minutes in a summary format instead of verbatim. And I can send that over to Virginia if you want, unless you want to word it however. You know how to do that, Scott, just to make that, so that it reaffirms, you have permission, and that's, that's how that's going. Yes, yes, and that'll help you guys out hopefully too.
Tremendously, thank you.
Okay.